Okay, good evening and welcome. We're going to call to order the May 2nd. This year is moving along fast of 2017 city council meeting of the city of Clayton. And please note that all council members are present with the exception of Tuya Conlon. She has a previous commitment and unable to attend tonight. Would you please join me? Well, we're going to have them bring in the colors. The wonderful group from the great.
Troop 262.
That's it, 262. Come right ahead. Use my microphone. Right ahead. A message from the leadership of the scout troop because we attended their annual dinner here several weeks ago over in Concord where they had a wonderful turnout for their annual event and made many presentations. So if one of the leaders from the troop would come up, we'd love to hear what's going on. Don't be afraid, come on up. We're being watched at home, so come forward.
It's boiling.
All right. This is part of leadership development. I'm sure you're going to get, I'm sure you're going to get a merit badge for that. Go right up there.
All right. Hello, my name is Charlie Pezmark, also known as Pez because he's an older Charlie, so I don't get Charlie. So we are part of Troop 262. We meet up at Mount Diablo Middle School. We meet up there every Tuesday and we go on outings like this summer we are going to Louisiana on a 62-mile kayaking trip. And that's a big trip we've been planning for I think like a year now. And I personally am planning a 50-miler also this upcoming summer. So that's a little bit about us.
Well, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it.
No, but you need to ask the district executive to come up.
I will. I want the, I asked him to come up. Okay, come on up because he and I met at the, at the dinner and I confided in him that it's been a few number of years since I wore one of those uniforms, but I was proud to wear it at the time and it's a great tradition, the Boy Scouts and all the things that they do in developing our youth.
Well, you know, Mayor Diaz.
Tell us who you are.
My name's Arnel Jaime. I'm the district executive for the Mount Diablo Silverado Council of the Boy Scouts of America. I represent the cities of Clayton, Concord, and Martinez. And tonight I'm actually with one of your local troops, Troop 262, like what our, you know, youth, our scout said, and they will be making our presentation specifically the scouts' involvement in the city. So without further ado, because you guys are not here to see me. Leave it up to the boys.
All right. Come forward. Who's first? Don't be shy. Here we go. All right, thank you.
Mayor Diaz, member of Clayton City Council, city council, city staff. Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Jess Veezy. I'm a Star Scout and I'm the first aid instructor for Troop 262. The Boy Scouts of America was founded in 1910. For over 100 years, the mission of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their life by and by instilling them the values of the scout oath and law. I am here together with my fellow scouts from Clayton to support on the status of scouting in our city.
And here comes another one.
My name is William Cates. I am a Life Scout and I am the ASPL, I mean, no, not ASPL anymore. I'm the APL Assistant Patrol Leader and I'm in Troop 262. Members of a Cub Scout pack are boys from first to fifth grade. Depending on the age group, Cubs belong to dens with Tigers being the youngest and going up to weed lows. In Clayton alone, there are over 50 Cub Scouts. This year completed the first year of the Lion Cubs Pilot Program, which are boys who in kinder, who are in kindergarten. We like to have fun, play games, and learn about the outdoors in our country with our families.
Thank you. And here we come again.
My name is Troy Wolliver. I am a Life Scout and currently the troop guide of Troop 262. Boy Scout troop members are boys ages 11 and 10 when they start off. And they, they're depending on meeting some requirements up to their age 17th year of their life, age 17. Our units want camping, hiking, swimming, mountain climbing, fishing, and a lot more. Our units want, although we do not have a lot of outdoor activities, we're also taught how to respect the environment and leave things better than we found them, to leave no trace rules. So see if a piece of trash, pick it up. Don't take sticks or rocks, leave them there. Basically, if you're on a campsite, make it better than it was when you came. There are close to 100 scouts in Clayton troops and Concord troops in the area. Collectively, those scouts have earned over 220 merit badges since 2016 alone. And a few scouts have also earned the rank of Eagle. Thank you.
My name is Brian Dulittle. I am at the rank of Scout and I am in Troop 262. Scouting is a program that is not limited to Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts. Venturing is another program in scouting for 14- to 20-year-old boys or, boys and girls. Venture crews are formed, are formed based on what hobbies or interests in a group of young boys and girls may have. Crews can consist of boys, all girls, all boys, all girls, or co-ed. Another program is Exploring. Exploring is a career education program for youth. Depending on the career field, the ages of Exploring youth are from 15 to 20 years old. In addition to the traditional law enforcement and fire protection career fields, Exploring has 10 other career fields that a company or organization can sponsor like arts, humanities, aviation, business, communication, engineering, and technology, health, law, science, skilled trades, and social sciences.
Thank you.
He's the shortest guy with the longest speech. There is more.
All right. So my name is Alex Leong and I am Life Scout and I am one of the patrol leaders in Troop 262. So a big part of scouting program is due to other people. Since we have started these presentations in 2015, my fellow scouts have contributed a total of 5,187 service hours to the city of Clayton.
Great.
So that huge number is roughly 648 eight-hour days that someone from scouting picked up trash, put flags in the cemeteries to honor veterans, cleaned up trails, creeks, or other parks, walked a parade in celebration of our county's independence, and erected park benches and fences in our parks and schools for residents to enjoy. In behalf of the mayor district, the Mount Diablo Silver Council, and the Boy Scouts of America, I would like to present the city of Clayton's city council with a plaque with the number of service hours contributed by our scout units.
Great, thank you.
You've got to stage the shot.
There we go.
Excellent. This is fantastic. Thank you so much. Great work. All right, your Boy Scouts are always there when we need them. Thank you very much. And our press relations will get the names of all of the young men that came up and spoke tonight so we make sure we have an accurate spelling of their names for publication in the local newspaper. And thank you again very much for coming out. Thank you for your service and we look forward to another great year of relationship with the city and the Boy Scouts of America and the troops that you all represent. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, moving on into our agenda, we now come to the consent calendar. Move approval.
Second.
It's all been moved and approved. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Ordered. All right, next we have recognitions and presentations. And we're very pleased tonight that we are officially appointing our new city treasurer, former city councilman, former vice mayor, and former mayor of the city of Clayton, Hank Stratford. Come forward and take your oath of office, please.
Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I am Hank Stratford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the.
And allegiance to the.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Yay. Although you have, wait a minute, don't run away. Although you have left and, by the way, it's at Hank's direction and leadership that the, the awards that we present to all of the elementary, middle school, and high school, the Do the Right Thing was his conceived idea and it continues to go on beyond your service as our mayor and other, other matters that you did with the city. But now you get the keys to the bank account. All right. Here you go with their official certificate of appointment that was enacted by the council on April 18th and we present it to you tonight. A second, would you please like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Diaz. It, it was an honor for me to serve on the city council and during those eight years that I was here, it was also comforting to know that we had a city treasurer who, I don't think anybody knows who the city treasurer is, which is fine, but with the city staff as small as we have, it's important that we have someone that's, we have another set of eyes that looks over the books, looks over the, some of the finances that goes on. And so I was honored when the council appointed me to this position. I look forward to serving with the council. One of the first things that I did was I asked the city manager if I could get on his list for the weekly updates because I missed knowing what was going on in the city. So, thank you, Gary. And thank you to the council and I look forward to serving with you.
Great. I do want to make, underscore that this is a non-compensated position and not only that, but Hank is a certified public accountant, which even adds more to credibility to the fact that the work that he will be doing is our city treasurer. And we welcome you back and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
There you go, Hank.
We have a few more awards and recognitions to move on with. We've already had that. So we will now move to the certificates of recognition to the public school students selected for exemplifying Do the Right Thing, specifically integrity during March through April of 2017. And the first, well, actually all three of them are from the Diablo Middle School. So if, one at a time, we will bring each one of them up. I know that one of the officials from the school is going to be here to make a little presentation and just give us a little background.
Want to smelt down the blue.
Okay, wait a minute. Mountain, little school. Oh yes, okay. You're right. Okay, so the first thing we want to do, we're going to do Mount Diablo School Elementary first and then we'll do the middle school. But first, if we could bring up Grady Rose. Now, who from the school is going to be making, oh, here we go. Come on forward and here we have your certificate of recognition and I will give, right there, I will give you.
Thank you. Hi, Grady. Hi, thank you for being here. I'm Kristen Burkhart and I'd like to acknowledge a very special student tonight. Grady Rose has shown integrity of character in the short three months since I've been his teacher. Integrity is being honest and honorable. And sometimes integrity means going against the crowd. It means doing the right thing even when those around you are not. As I took over in February for Grady's teacher, Mrs. Glazer, I had big shoes to fill. An established classroom has established routines and sometimes students push the limits to see what the new teacher will let them get away with. But Grady was always someone that I could count on to tell me how things were run. He was always forthcoming with the truth. Now that I've settled into my own routine, Grady continues to be a student whom I can trust to do the right thing. He's sincere and kind and truthful and I look forward to seeing Grady grow and those around him are very lucky to count him as their friend. Congratulations, Grady.
We have an additional presentation that was, made note to me yesterday when both the vice mayor and I were at the opening of the Clayton Valley Village. Representative from State Senator Steve Glazer's office was there and he also authored a certificate of recognition from the California State Senate that we want to add to that certificate from the city of Clayton. So please enjoy that, put that in a, along with that, in a place of honor and people will recognize your contributions to the school, to the community, and to the state. All right? And what we'll do is we're going to bring up the other students from the middle school and at the end we'll bring them all back up for a photograph for all to see in the newspaper. Grady, thank you very much. All right. Okay, we have now from the middle, middle school, Diablo View Middle School, we have, the first is Lillian Ryan. Where is Lillian? Here she comes. Your certificate of recognition and who's going to speak on behalf of the middle school? Ah, yes. Here we go.
Good evening. I am pleased to recognize Lily Ryan and she's an eighth grader and she really exemplifies that character of doing the right thing. She's, she's a hard worker. She really exhibits doing what she, she needs to be doing all the time. She actually practices grit all the time. And so one thing about Lily, we were in need of a office TA in the middle of the year. And I wasn't sure who, who I would find at that point. And for some reason Lily fell into our, our office and she agreed to be the TA and she is amazing. So any of you that have, have a business or something, this is the gal you want. Because she totally takes over. She tells us what we should be doing in the office and, and she's just amazing. So we so appreciate her, we're thinking maybe not promoting her so we can keep her on as well. You're welcome, honey.
The vice mayor has also a presentation.
Yes, as the mayor indicated, Steve Glazer has also liked to recognize this wonderful program we have and the students that are being recognized. So we wanted to give you a certificate from him as well and this is from the California State Senate. So this is a nice award as well. So thank you much for your efforts and for being recognized. You bet.
Okay, the final one from the Diablo View Middle School is Allison Spitzer. And here comes Allison. Your certificate. And I'll let Patricia show what you've done to deserve this.
So Ally is one of our seventh graders and again, she is an outstanding student. She, she really exemplifies the, the character of integrity, doing what, what she's supposed to be, doing all the time. She's one of our leadership students, so she is instrumental in doing a lot of the activities at school. One thing about Ally, you see that beautiful smile she has? She always has that smile. So I can always get a hello from Ally and she's just an amazing young lady. And another thing about Ally is that she actually volunteers at the Diamond Terrace and that's one of the things we want to get our students to go over. So Ally and I have been trying to work, work up some days that we can go to Diamond Terrace and, and see the, the residents there. So she's a wonderful young lady too.
Thank you.
Okay, Ally, again, the state senator would also like to recognize your performance. So we have a nice certificate from Steve Glazer. And again, this was recognized and signed on the floor of the state senate here in California. So this is a nice recognition of the wonderful honor you've just been given for this evening. So thank you very much.
One of the things, I was so excited to see Hank there because Hank and I were really started Do the Right Thing and we'd had our little meetings at Diablo View and decided about our character traits. So Hank and I go way back with Do the Right Thing. So I'm excited to see him back working for you guys too.
Absolutely. He's going to be working with us. Okay. Why don't we bring up the students back again so we can get a photograph? And I'm going to ask Hank to come up since he was the, the one that underwrote this whole issue of Do the Right Thing and have him be a part of the photograph. And we'll take all of our pictures together. Hold up your certificates of the press.
Let's, let's put you right behind, just your seventh grade, eighth grade, not that elementary.
Right.
I know you. You're, I know you.
You're what?
I'm teasing.
Get in there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Jim, move in.
Okay.
Perfect. Everybody, big breath. In, let it out. Got it.
Today the county members would like to take some photographs. Come forward right now while we all, while we have everybody here. More paparazzi, come on. Yes, come on up. I'm sure you'll be seeing some of the Clayton pioneers very shortly. Please have your press badges showing. Does someone holding up the senate one?
No. It's framing, the red is framing. Somebody else show the one from Steve Glazer's office too.
Well, to all of you in the rest of your school year. All right. That's wonderful. Yes, you can go home and do your homework. Okay, we have a special, thank you all. You don't have to go. We understand if you want to. I believe we have a special report from Peggy Howell from the Board of Trustees of the Contra Costa Mosquito Vector Control District. Welcome.
Thank you. My audience just left. Does it? Well, let's see if I can do this. There we go. I am Peggy Howell and I am the president of the Board of Trustees of the Contra Costa Mosquito and Vector Control District. I've been the representative from Clayton for nine years. I've lived in Clayton 25 years and grew up in Walnut Creek. So didn't go too far here. I wanted to volunteer for the community and the reason I wanted this job is because it's a special interest of me. My academic training, I have a master's of science in medical microbiology and I've spent my career in various aspects of clinical laboratory science and public health is a passion for me. Having said that, the Board of Trustees is mostly fiduciary, but I, I can understand the scientific reports really well. This is, is a special district under the rules of the State of California and it is located off a highway four near Port Chicago Highway, Mason Circle. And this is the facility. This report is just a basic overview of kind of who we are and where we are at this point in time. So we've been around a long time, established in 1927. It is governed by 22 trustees, which is a pretty huge board. 19 are appointed by the city councils of Contra Costa County and thank you, city council, for appointing me. I appreciate it. Three are appointed by the Board of Supervisors at large. We have 33 permanent employees and five to 10 seasonal employees and of course, the season for mosquitoes is the summer. Our budget is almost $7 million. It's funded through property tax revenues and benefit assessment charges. The services are, include controlling the vectors of all microbial diseases, primarily mosquitoes. Rats actually aren't vectors, but they carry fleas, which are vectors, ticks and skunks. The Board of Trustees, our responsibilities are, we oversee the hiring, the evaluation, and the salary of the general manager. We get involved with the employee positions in that we establish the salary ranges. We don't hire, we don't promote, we don't do anything like that. It's just the general manager. But we do establish the ranges. We try to stay pretty much at the top of the State of California because employee retention is really important to our board and it's worked out very well. We review and approve the annual budget. We hire the auditing firm, the engineering firm that does the benefit assessment, the attorney, and the professional negotiator because we do have represented employees. And we do advanced planning. The profile for the Board of Trustees is we are volunteers with no benefits and only $100 a month and that's in lieu of travel expenses to and from. I bring that up because the Contra Costa Times loves to tell you how much these volunteers are getting and we're not. This is truly volunteer. The president and vice president are rotated annually based on tenure and as I said, last year I was vice president and this year I'm president. So I get to run the meetings and I get a gavel. Our current financial situation, our fiscal year ends June 30th. We're on track to end the year over budget on revenue and under budget on expenses. This is a little unusual this year because we had the big downturn in property taxes. I'm sure that rings a bell.
All very aware.
Yes. Prior to that, times were good and we built up a healthy reserve. We didn't spend a lot of it. We spent some for solar power so that it would decrease our operating expenses, but after that, we pretty much kept a healthy reserve. And so we've continued all the vital services. We haven't increased the benefit assessment even though the property taxes, the bottom fell out. The reserve is still healthy and we carefully budget and make sure that we are able to cover our expenses. We also took a lot of, a good hard look at what we could do to cut expenses and we kind of cut down on some seasonal employees. In 2008 and a few years thereafter, we formed special swimming pool strike teams because there were so many abandoned swimming pools with all the difficulties with the real estate market. So all in all, we've been able to continue our services. So the current status, we have two species of mosquito which carry West Nile virus and that is our primary concern. We have traps placed around the county. The Clayton trap is in my backyard or just over the fence in my backyard. And every Wednesday they come and they collect the mosquitoes that have collected in the trap and we identify the species and we test for the viruses. Different viruses, not just West Nile, but that's the problem here. We maintain sentry chickens. Chickens don't die from West Nile, but they can get it and be infected. So if you just stake them out there in certain areas, it's kind of an early warning sign that the mosquitoes are actively carrying the virus because they bite the chickens and then we can collect the chicken blood and find out that they have West Nile. So we have the sentry chickens. We track and collect the dead birds, ravens and blue jays. Those are corvids and those are the birds that die from West Nile and carry the, the disease most often that then the mosquitoes bite them and keep going. The public reports the dead birds for the most part and even if we don't collect them all, we track them all just to make sure that we don't have clusters various places. The ways we control the mosquitoes, our public education is our primary thing and that is reaching out in a whole vast number of ways. I don't know if you noticed at the beginning, Contra Costa Mosquito is our website and there's a lot of information on there. But the main thing to know is that these mosquitoes can reproduce in a teaspoonful of water. And so if you have any standing water in your yard, you might be producing mosquitoes. And so we try and keep the public educated about that. The second thing we do, and we, and we try this, we try The second thing we do, and we try this, we try the lowest level of environmental things that we can possibly do to control the population and yet not harm the environment. So, public education is the number one thing to do, just cut down on standing water. Then mosquito fish, we raise, we have huge tanks that we raise mosquito fish and they eat the larvae and the public is invited to come and get mosquito fish and dump them in their ornamental ponds or wherever they want and they'll eat up the larvae. They're very effective. When that doesn't do the job, then we have larvacides, which we spread on bodies of water. They, that's, it's kind of like an oil, but it's mostly used in the marshlands and the swamp lands to cut down on the mosquito population there. And then finally, when all else has failed, we use adulticides. Those are applied by fogging, trucks driving through the neighborhood fogging and in rare instances, this year for the first year in years, we had to employ planes to apply this adulticide. I will say that Board of Trustees, we're really lucky with 22 members, which is a lot of members. We all get along really well, but there's a wide variety of expertise. So, there's a person from every city and we have a couple of PhDs in chemistry who kind of hold the feet to the fire on the pesticides that we're using to make sure that they are environmentally safe. We have quite a few with a lot of expertise financially. Director, we have a Director of a Fortune 500 company, that type of thing. There's a lot of expertise. We have an attorney. So, there's a lot of expertise to kind of oversee everything that we're doing scientifically as well as our fiduciary responsibilities. This is the kind of way that we track, this is from last year and as you can see, the red triangles are mosquitoes that were infected with the West Nile virus. And you can see where the problem is pretty much right here. The sentry chickens are the blue dots. So, the East County is the place where there's the most difficulty with mosquitoes. We have some difficulty here and then the coastal area is not so much at all. They have a lot of breezes and whatnot and take care of it, but the hotter regions and that's reflected in our benefit assessment. Our engineering report produces a report every year from our engineering firm to make sure that the places in the county that are getting the most benefit from our services are paying the most. So, on my property tax bill for Clayton, I'm paying $3.78 a year for this service, but out in Brentwood, they're paying more like $7 a year. Needless to say, we don't have a lot of members of the public showing up at the meetings yelling about this, but at any rate, that's how it's done. The dead birds are birds that were found and infected with West Nile and that one that looks like it's near Clayton is really in Concord. So, we haven't had any problems here.
The clay is clean, right?
Yeah, we're clean. I am, you know, as an aside, I'm a little bit worried about the quarry and I just want to mention that because there's been an application to not do the environmental thing that they require to do right now, which is when they're done with that quarry, fill it in with dirt and plant trees and stuff like that. Their current application is just to leave it and they say, over 75 years, it'll collect rainwater and be a beautiful lake for our recreation. I just see it as a giant pile of stagnant water right near Clayton. That really worries me and I just wanted to make that little comment. So, we're clean now, I wonder. That one in Concord, that was a little bit interesting, the one in the middle. That was over at Treat and Oak Grove and they found a whole bunch of infected mosquitoes, dead birds and whatnot over at that corner, which is kind of near where our entomologist lives. He was personally affronted, but it turned out that the fire department maintains a pond for training purposes over there and it was just breeding mosquitoes like crazy. So, we took care of it, dumped a bunch of mosquito fish in there. But this is the way we track things, just so you know. This is kind of some of the statistics that we do. This was out of date because it was taken before the year ended, but I did want you to see what it looked like. I don't have a more current slide. The final numbers for 2016, there were 442 human cases in California and four cases in Contra Costa County. No deaths in Contra Costa County, although we've had deaths in previous years. They think that for every human case that's actually diagnosed, there's probably 100 that aren't diagnosed. It's like a lot of the viruses. It can be very mild. You think you had the flu, you know, you don't really know much of anything. It doesn't get diagnosed. It only gets diagnosed when somebody's got a real problem. But that's how we keep track of it. So, our current challenge for the board is after 16 years, our General Manager is retiring in August. I begged him to wait till next year when I'm not the President, but would not. So, I am the chairperson of the search committee and we have hired Ralph Anderson Associates to conduct an executive search. That's underway right now. Thanks to Gary for helping me vet the search firm. I called him for a recommendation. So, the search is underway. We are going to have screened candidates interview in June and there's going to, we will, the search committee will make a recommendation and present our recommendation to the full board in July 10th and we will be able to make an offer and hopefully have this person in place for a week or two overlap with our current General Manager. So, that's the plan. That's our biggest challenge that way and just, we don't know how the challenges are going to come down with the mosquitoes this year because we may be the only ones who aren't thrilled with all the water. So, any questions?
Any from the council?
No, quite a report. Thank you.
Actually, I'm just curious, do you expect that this is going to be a pretty problematic year, given all the rainfall and all the water that's around still?
There's going to be a bumper crop of mosquitoes. Whether or not it's problematic with West Nile is really, we're not sure and here's why. Our West Nile infection rates went up during the drought, which makes no sense unless you hear the explanation. During the drought, there was so little water that the animals and mosquitoes were hovering around fewer and fewer. So, they were closer packed together and the infection spread better. So, I don't know, maybe they'll be spread all over the place and nobody will get infected. We're not quite sure how this is, we know we're going to have a ton of mosquitoes. We just don't know about the infections. Good question.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yeah, thank you for the report. I am actually on the email list, so I get the regular updates every week and I really appreciate that because this is something that we really do need to watch. They're, you know, the seniors and those who are in firm are very susceptible. And I happen to be one of those who is apparently fairly tasty to mosquitoes. And I react rather strongly to them and it's not at all fun. And having spent the about 24 hours in Yosemite this weekend, I can tell you, they are everywhere and they are huge up there with all the snow and all of that. It is just incredible, the crop of mosquitoes up there. So, it was about 5 o'clock in the evening when it started to finally cool off just a little. They were out just in droves. I mean, they were hungry. So, I am concerned about what it's going to be like here. I've noticed even here, we have a lot more than we usually do at this time of year. So, I, we need to get that word out, so.
Yeah, definitely. And we do the updates on the.
You do. I would suggest though, and I think you've done it in the past and you can refresh my memory, but a short article for Tamra's publication about the dangers of them and with you being our representative and the President of the Board, I think that would be great for our public to know just a little bit more.
We would be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that's really important.
We have a great Director for our Public Affairs and she does the best she can, but the more the merrier.
Exactly. She does a great job and she responds very quickly to emails. I know that personally.
Yeah, she's great. We also, you can get on the list. We really don't need this in Clayton, but out in Brentwood and whatever, there's email alerts that you can get. I get them because I'm on the board.
I do too.
For fogging. You know, if your street's going to be fogged, they'll alert you. So, we try and do a good job, but I'd be happy to, the more the merrier.
I think that would be a good service to our community.
I live in Dana Ridge and our recent newsletter actually had a little blurb on getting in touch with us and it didn't come from me, but.
Awesome. Well, thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Following up on that, do you guys do any social media stuff? I mean, I'm on the email list too, so I kind of guess I don't need to go searching for it, but do you have, you know, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook? Okay.
Deborah does a great job. In fact, last year I went to a leadership seminar put on by the Association of Special Districts down in Palm Springs and I literally had people coming up to me and saying, oh, we follow Deborah's Twitter, that type of thing. So, yes, we do. We do all of the above.
That's good to know.
We've done signs in BART. Just, there was a, last year, I think there was a display in the library over here. That's great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. First off, for those that are listening or watching, wanted to let you know that on our city website, we have placed the Vector Control District's website as a hot link. So, if you don't know, you know, where to go for the Vector Control Board, but if you know where City of Clayton is, you can just get there by that avenue. Secondly, I just wanted, from the staff perspective, to thank Peggy and her staff that the, when we are presented with swimming pools that are, have been neglected and other things, we look at various ways we can get there quickly and be able to address that and I compliment you on your swimming pool strike team, I guess is what you call it.
Catapulting mosquito fish.
I guess they're not in swimsuits, but they're ghostbusters in a different fashion. But thank you for that because when those pools are neglected, it affects more than just that single property because mosquitoes don't understand boundaries very well.
No, they don't.
So, we appreciate that and thank you. The other, just a question for you. The mosquito abatement tax rate, that is based upon assessed valuation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, because you said $3.78.
That's the benefit assessment.
Oh, that, okay.
So, there's two. We get it from property taxes and from the benefit assessment.
Very good.
So, we are allowed as a board to raise the benefit assessment without anybody.
Yes.
As a special district, you can do.
As a special district, we can do that. We're very proud. We haven't done it ever that I can think of. I mean, it's, I've been on the board nine years. We've never raised it. Even in tough times, we didn't raise it. We try very, very hard to be responsible and accomplish our task without hurting the taxpayers.
Great. Thank you.
Any other?
Just want to reinforce the value that can be provided with the outreach program, with the preventative practices that can be taken. There's going to be so much standing water above and beyond the normal where is, you know, prime breeding for these types of mosquitoes. So, something we all need to be watching out for.
Definitely. And we do other things besides the mosquitoes. We have a problem with roof rats, for example, and you can get our technicians to come out and we aren't a pest control company here, but what we will do is assess the situation, show a homeowner where they're getting in, you know, that kind of thing, help them figure out why their yard is attracting them. So, there's a lot of others. We will eradicate ground nests of wasps, not the ones, just because they're nasty, that kind of thing. We control rats in sewers only. We don't, we don't use rodenticides. We had the whole Audubon Society come and talk to us about not doing that. So, we're real careful about that. You know, nobody asked, but I will just say Zika is not a problem here in that we don't have the genus and species of mosquito that carries Zika here. It has been found as far north as the Central Valley, Fresno and whatnot, and we do maintain surveillance for it. So, we will be on top of it. We include in our budget money for emerging type of diseases and we do have surveillance for it. That and some of the others. Dengue is carried by the same mosquito as Zika is. So, but we're lucky.
Peggy, I have two of them on the distribution list, but I would appreciate some, and maybe I ought to follow up with you offline, but for the next Mayor's Call to further publicize this, it would be nice to have a little brief summary to convey on that. Back on your map, excuse me for digressing here.
Sure.
But up on there, in the area there by Pittsburgh and Antioch with that red diamond, is that because of the close proximity to the water? Is that?
That and the heat. The two things together, water and the temperature of that area. It's just perfect breeding grounds.
Okay. And, but, so everything else is relative to more of bird, dead birds and that kind of a situation as opposed to mosquitoes? Like, for example, in the heart of Concord and the area that borders between Concord and Clayton, that was just a nesting of dead birds or?
Yeah, that was, several dead birds were found. We collect the dead birds and identify that they are infected.
Gotcha.
Because not every dead bird is infected.
But they were in Concord.
But they weren't.
Right. I want to make sure we know that.
They were Concord birds. They had a little.
They probably get infected.
Shit them out, right? They steered them away?
And tell me, I noticed you said that you minimally use the air. When, I seem to remember sometime, I may have lost track of time, but there was an inundation. We were being, you know, air bombed on a regular basis because there was, I guess, a real uptick in some trouble areas. It's been a couple of years.
That must be, I haven't seen us do that for quite a long time. Now, some of the other districts use, they're worried about fruit flies, things like that.
Right.
And they get a lot of pushback from environmentalists.
Right, right.
Because of that. I'll tell you, I am an environmentalist, but I'm also pragmatic. I don't want people hurt. So, I don't want people hurt by diseases. So, you have to have a balance there. We get, it's been three years since we had a member of the public show up at a meeting and I think that that's probably because no matter what your political stripe or your feelings are, everybody hates mosquitoes. We can all come together on that. So.
Well, thank you, Peggy. And I can, I want to share, in my days when I was in the military, I was stationed in Florida. They had a severe problem. I can remember on a regular basis, there were trucks going out the streets fumigating and it was just unbelievable. They really have a problem in that area.
Right.
Not only because of the climate and the close proximity to the water, but not only mosquitoes, but other, other.
Lots of things.
Right.
Well, that mosquito, the 80s, which they do have in Florida, the one that carries Zika.
Right.
Is active during the daytime. Ours, Culex tersalis and Culex pippian's are active in the evening and night, so we can fog at night and we don't hurt anybody that way.
Yeah, right.
And including the beekeepers get all excited about it sometimes too, so.
Peggy, thank you very much. It was very informative and I really appreciate, not only for the council, but for the, our citizens at home that are watching via streaming, that this is very important. You're giving them a great amount of information and I didn't realize that on our website, we have that hyperlink, superlink to yours so that they can get further information on this matter.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next and final item, it's that time of year again on our presentations and recognition portion, is the kickoff of the Clayton Certified Farmer's Market. And I see Lynette coming forward along with Sean and they're going to give us a presentation.
Hello, everybody. It's good to see you guys again. We're here to talk about the Clayton Farmer's Market and, okay. All right. So, 2016, we moved the market over from Diablo Street over to, across the street from the Clayton Club in the Kinder Care Parking Lot.
Right.
And I would like to first talk about the vendors. So, in 2016, and I apologize, I don't have any stats from 2015 because we're moving all of our data from our old operating system to Salesforce, so I don't have that information, but I think this will suffice. 2016, we had six agricultural vendors, seven non-ag, one hot food and one artisan. And this year, we are almost doubling the amount of vendors we have with 12 agricultural vendors, 11 non-ag, one hot food and two artisans. We have a variety coming in this year. We have some local vendors. We have a meat vendor called Hanson Ranch and they are right off Marsh Creek, Marsh Creek in Clayton. They'll have pork and goat and some beef. We have a vendor selling fresh fish and he'll take up quite a amount, like about three tents. So, we have a lot of tents going on. It's going to look much fuller this year. And we have fish tacos, which I'm very, very excited about because we got to taste them and they're very good and nobody else has them. So, we have lots of different kinds of, different varieties of the same stuff. We also have an Asian foods vendor coming out this year as well. So, we're very excited about that. And then I wanted to talk, look at the crowd count for last year. at the crowd count for last year. It started off a little, you know, a little slow, but comparing to 2015, which I don't have on here, but it, it was much higher. The move really did help. We got a lot more people coming in this year, and consistently. It didn't drop off like 2015 had. And if you take a look at number 34, which is August 27th, we had the highest crowd count, which was because we introduced a food truck. And we also advertised into, into Concord. And so, we had a lot more different kinds of people coming in. They were very excited about the food truck. Unfortunately, we couldn't keep the food truck, and we went back down. But, you know, I think the fish vendor, the, the fish vendor, the meat vendor and the fish tacos, specifically the fish tacos, should really be a big draw for everybody this year. And I want to talk a little bit about some of the comments from the community. And a big issue with them was the amount of vendors. They wanted more vendors. They, they said that they go to Shadelands, because there are more vendors, more variety. And I feel like this year, we're, we got it. We brought them in. We have a lot of vendors. And I think, like, on the, May 14th is our opening day. We have, it's just going to be a big show. And I think we're going to get back in. We're going to steal Shadelands.
14th, May 13th.
May 14th.
Sunday?
13th?
Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. 13th. I'm thinking of Mother's Day.
Well, I'm glad you're thinking of Mother's Day, but.
Yes, May 13th.
First market is the 13th.
What's that?
13th.
Yes, 13th, May 13th. And we will have a Mother's Day, Mother's Day photo booth as well.
Okay.
And we also have a flower vendor back this year. So, yeah, things are very, they're looking very up. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I just think it's fantastic to double the vendors. That's great.
Looking forward to it, yeah.
Well, it's still visible there, too. I think that's a big reason for the additional draw. It reinforces that you're there.
Yeah, absolutely.
And once people know that and see what you have to offer, they're going to come back. That's good.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good.
We're also changing the time this season.
Oh, that's right. Sorry about that. We're changing it from 8:00 to 12:00. We're changing it to 9:00 to 1:00. So, we will start at 9:00 AM on May 13th.
Okay.
Very good.
The reason for that change is that we noticed that in that parking lot, they had more shade.
Come up and speak into the microphone that way, Sean.
We noticed that last season, being that parking lot has more shade with the trees that are in that parking lot. So, people were actually able to kind of hang out a little bit more and enjoy the market. And we found that the crowds tend to linger a little later in the day. From 11:00 to 12:00 is their busiest time. So, we're hoping that with that extended time and the fish tacos for lunch, should be a win-win situation.
Gives your vendors a lot more time to get there and get set up, because some of them come from a long ways away. It was hard for them to be there by 8:00.
Yeah, and we have a lot of producers also that go to other markets as well. And so it gives them a better opportunity to attend the market and correspondence with other markets, so.
Mr. Knapper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge, and I know the Farmers Market Group appreciates that, too, the cooperation of Kinder Care. I mean, they've been very generous in allowing a variety of groups, including this last weekend, but also for the Farmers Market to utilize their parking lot for this purpose. That's helped to create a better venue, better environment. So, tip of the hat to Kinder Care.
I know you mentioned more vendors. Two questions I always get, how about a pastry vendor? Will that be, they're good? And then you also said something about lunch. Will there also be somebody, I know in the past years, you've had somebody serving sandwiches or things like that. Is that in the works for this year?
So, the fish tacos, we've got, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, so if there'll be something for people to, you know, to grab to eat while they're, you know, looking around at the vegetables and fruit?
Yes. And always, as always, like last year, we're just going to keep recruiting people in, so.
Great. Fantastic.
Good.
Well, we look forward to it every year. I'm telling you, it's a, it's a big item in this town.
Yeah. Yeah, like, like, per usual, if there's any, any restaurants or any local producers that want to attend the market, we more than happy to have them come in, and we can feature them on the newsletter and have the public involved with that for sure, because we like to support the Clayton community, so.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to it. Okay, now we move into reports. And the first one is.
Finally.
Did you say something to all those people? Okay. And we have a report from the Planning Commission. We have Vice Chairman CW Wolf. Also, by the way, upcoming, reminding everybody that the 4th of July parade.
Yes.
You are the official emcee.
I am the official emcee, and I'm looking forward to seeing your convertibles come by. Oh, sorry, mosquito. Hey, it's a pleasure to be back before you again. Nice to be before Julie for the first time. We, at the Planning Commission, had our meeting on the 25th, and it was a rather lively meeting, certainly the most lively one that I've attended. And that is because of our public hearing, a general amendment and municipal code amendment for the City of Clayton, a request for the consideration of a land use amendment to the general plan regarding the determination of residential density calculations and, and ordinance pertaining to the changes to the city municipal code. This is about the residential density calculations for parcels and sensitive land areas. And there seemed to have been some miscommunication put out there. We had quite a crowd. And we had a lot of speakers come up and mention various projects in town. They thought that this was all about high-density land use, and that we were trying to get, you know, high-density housing going on. And they mentioned the downtown project. They mentioned Silver Oak and, and things that we haven't even seen. And they were very passionate about this. But, again, I think this had a lot to do with the misinformation that was put out there. After the, we had our say, I think that we clarified, and certainly the staff clarified, what this was all about. And I think, judging by the crowd we have here, they understood what we were trying to do, and the, the motion passed unanimously. So, that was a very exciting, a very exciting meeting. The not-so-exciting part, after everybody got up and left, we had the municipal code amendment for building and construction, in order to revise the sign provisions to comply with the US Supreme Court decisions. And this would be to prohibit mobile billboards and to incorporate other best practices. And we also voted that unanimously through.
Great.
Any questions?
Fantastic. Any questions?
Hey, thanks for taking the heat.
Yes. And I look forward, I look forward to more, more of that. I think it'll be fun.
Number Pierce.
Yes.
I think we understood what you're talking about, CW, but I think the public may not understand. And what you actually did was allow for sensitive parcels of land to actually have less units built on them.
Correct.
Than they would had you not made this change.
Right.
Because you allowed a reduction based on the buildable area.
Correct.
Outside of floodplain restrictions and, and creekside restrictions and slope restrictions and all of that. All of that got taken out of the calculation.
Correct. So, we're actually be less on, on.
Lower densities, yeah.
Lower density, yes. I think, I think people were generally pleased with that outcome.
Yes, yes. I, I just think the public needs to understand that that's actually the action you took.
Right.
The social media was portraying it as something far different.
Right. Three-story buildings, four-story buildings with lots of, yeah, that's, that wasn't the.
But what you did was you actually made it better. So, that's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yes, we made it, we made it better.
And it sounds like that message was finally understood by the crowd that didn't show up.
Yes, and there were a lot of questions and clarifications of staff. And I think once the, once the vote came down, and once we all had our say, people really understood it.
Good.
Good. Any other questions? Great. CW, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing you most, I guess, as the, on the July 4th holiday parade.
I'll be there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Trails and Landscape Committee no meeting. City Manager and Staff.
No report, Mr. Mayor, just to note that we are not immune, as a local agency, from alternative facts.
Thank you. Okay, we now will get some reports from our fellow city council members on what's happening in their end of this world.
I had a couple of meetings, nothing of urgency or anything that I need to report, but when it comes to fruition, I might have a few things, but I'm all good. The city's all good.
Oh, good, 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 good.
It's all good.
Vice Mayor Keith Hayden.
Okay. Since our last council meeting, I did have a Clayton Library Foundation meeting, and they were talking about how pleased they were with the increased attention they're getting from the city. We've had a change in management there. And luckily, they feel that their needs are being met or listened to and, and met at a higher degree. So, that was good. And also talked about the upcoming book sale and, and preparing for that. That was on April 19th. And then on the 22nd, we had the Clayton Cleans Up event here, that most of us participated in. And then on Monday, the 24th, we had the Habitat Conservancy Committee meeting, and actually met here in Hoyer Hall in Clayton. So, I was always proud to show Clayton, and it was a beautiful afternoon. We looked over a number of items, primarily looking at the accomplishments for last year and the summary report that they're putting together to help publicize that. And you'll all be receiving a copy of that in the near future. Then on Thursday, the 27th, we had the CBCA Monthly Meeting. And then last weekend, we had the Jim Deas Art and Wine Festival. And then yesterday, as Jim indicated, we both attended the Clayton Valley Village Kickoff Meeting. They've been working on this for, I think, over three years. So, they were very happy to finally bring it out into the public. They had a very good turnover, turnout at Endeavour Hall. And they were, I think, very pleased that representatives from two other village communities that are already in existence, in Walnut Creek and La Morinda, also attended, and are going to be real good resources for here in Clayton. So, that kept me busy.
Great. By the way, I want to mention that at the Clayton Cleans Up, you were the chief assistant hamburger flipper.
Stayed busy doing the barbecue, yep.
That was, that was something, because Republic Services brought in this huge barbecue. It was actually a trailer. And they were, I don't know how many could cook on there at one time, but it actually took two people to, to, to continue to keep the burgers moving along there. It was quite a.
Wow. I can remember on the Community Services Commission having two Webbers.
Yeah, right.
And, and tried to frantically do it, and tried not to burn them, but tried not to undercook them.
Well, this thing even had a warmer underneath, so once they got through and moved them off to the warmer, they could start cooking again.
Just kept cooking. Yeah, it was, it was an assembly line. But the nicest thing was we got all of that up out of the courtyard.
Right.
So, it was up on the actual parking lot level. So, that was good, too.
Well, I mean, between Republic Services, obviously, who did a lot of that and brought that out, and the Clayton Pioneer sponsoring, it was a tremendous event. Member Pierce.
Thank you. We've mentioned several times, the 4th of July, it is coming up. It's our next big event as a whole city. And we are looking for volunteers, so we would, anybody that wants to give us a hand on the day of the event, you don't have to do anything else but show up with your family, but come on down and give us a hand that day. Let us know. I attended the Country Coast Transportation Authority Committee Meetings and Executive Board Meeting. Also had half a dozen or so Association of Bay Area Government Committee Meetings and Executive Board Meetings. We are still negotiating the final, final details of our contract for services and MOU. We, both bodies have actually passed the basic contract for services. They're pending two issues. We have to get some final changes about PERS issues. One of our A-BAG is actually union, and MTC is not. They have an in-house bargaining group. So, you can imagine trying to get the, the two together on that. And, and so that's, that's our biggest sticking point at this point. But we did come to agreement at both bodies this last, this last week, so that, that was helpful. Attended the Bay Area Regional Collaborative, which is representatives from the Association of Bay Area Governments, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, from the Air Board and from Bay Conservation Development Commission, where we all get together and work on things that are common to all of us. Among them, impacts of sea level rise and how do we manage the infrastructure and the other impacts of that in a way where we're not either duplicating or contradicting each other. We learned several years ago, as many of you may remember, that the Air Board and BCDC passed regulations that were in direct conflict with each other, and that they also did things to the infrastructure, transportation infrastructure possibilities in the future, and that was not a good idea. So, now we're all in the same building. The executive directors all meet at least once a month together to talk about what they're working on. And policy-wise, we're all talking together as well. So, I think it's really helping with the overall regional planning, making things a lot more cohesive. So, that's a good thing. Attended the Clayton Cleans Up, helped serve all day, helped set up. And fortunately, I had my key to City Hall, because the organizers forgot to pick it up. But that's okay. We got it done. Worked at the Art and Wine Festival, was honored to, for the 22nd year in a row, host the vendor breakfast for all of the 95 vendor brew booths and the volunteers that showed up early. Now, one plug, this weekend is the Clayton Historic Society's Garden Tour, both Saturday and Sunday, from 10:00 to 4:00. Come on down to the museum, get a ticket. We have five gardens. They are all in Clayton. Four of them are actually in Dana Hills.
Really?
So, it's, it's really, they are spectacular. I think we have actually outdone ourselves this year. This is a really phenomenal show this year. So, come on out and help out the Clayton Historic Society with fundraiser. Thank you.
Great. Okay, my activities between now and the last city council meeting on the 20th, attended the County Connection Board Meeting. And the thing that was notable about that meeting was, one, that I didn't even realize, that one of our member, board members, former council member and current representative in Maraga, Aldous Sayer, was recognized for 30 years of service to the County Connection Board, which is quite an accomplishment. And he runs the Finance Committee. He used to be, when I worked at the telephone business, he was a, an accounting district manager over there. So, he's really adept at keeping an eye on the finances. Most notable, coming up next year, both Mayor Laura Hoffmeister and Councilmember Rob Storer from Danville will both be recognized for 20 years' membership on that board. So, there's some great institutional knowledge on there. The rest of us are all just kind of watching in amazement of what these people know about transportation and so forth. Clayton Cleans Up, I was there. I was councilmember's assistant, making sure everybody was ready for her service, handing out the hamburgers and hot dogs. It was a great event. We want to thank the Clayton Pioneer again for putting that on. It was well-attended. We had a beautiful day. Republic Services provided all of the cooking materials and so forth with, not only represented from their firm, but again, Vice Mayor Keith Hayden doing a lot of the cooking for a, a lot of people. It took a lot to feed all those folks as they started coming back around 11 o'clock from doing all of their cleanup work.
And they held away the trash.
Right, exactly. It was, it was absolutely amazing. Lot of activity, and a lot of the groups that, that helped support Clayton were all, they're providing information from, from both the community library, the people from Travis Credit Union and numbers that all participated in the event, all had booths there. I, too, attended the CBCA General Membership Meeting on the 27th. And then, the last three days are a blur. But I was, helped put together the, the Clayton 22nd Annual Art and Wine Festival. And I cannot thank both Vice Mayor Keith Hayden, who handled information. And for people that don't attend that, we have an information book right in the middle of Main Street. And between Vice Mayor Hayden and another gentleman by the name of Ed Hartley, they provide information for anybody, where do you go for this? What, what do I do to that? And so forth. Very instrumental. But more importantly, I want to mention the fact that Member, Councilmember Pierce did a huge job on what we call the hospitality. That's getting there early on both Saturday and Sunday morning, and making sure that the vendors and all the people that are out there volunteering have a nice cup of coffee and some pastry and so forth. Thank you all. And I want to say, I, based upon the information that I'm getting preliminarily, this may have been the most successful art and wine. We'll know more as we get the final, final expenses coming in over the balance of the next week or so. But we're very pleased about the outcome. We shifted it off, created a little bit of challenges for some other, other groups, but by shifting it to the. but by shifting it to the 29th and 30th of April, we got ahead of the regular, uh, festival season, which meant now the, the vendors didn't have to have a decision, well, I'm going to go to Clayton or I'm going to go someplace else. They came here, and as Councilmember Pierce said, we had 95-plus vendors. It was well-attended. Saturday was booming. Sunday, also very good. Anyway, I want to thank everybody. I sent a list off to the President of the CBCA, Bob Steiner, a list of all of the committee people that worked on that, that made it successful. And, you know, nothing could have been done without all of those people individually contributing their talents to that specific thing that they were assigned, and the unnamed volunteers that came in and worked, the ticket booths, the pouring and so forth, and the cleanup. We got a tremendous amount of help from the Charter High School with students coming out to help us with the cleanup and keeping things clean, maintained, and so forth. Excellent event, thank you. And then finally, both the Vice Mayor and I attended the Clayton Village Valley, excuse me, Clayton Valley Village kickoff over at Endeavour Hall yesterday afternoon. Huge success in terms of people coming out. What they do is they provide services to help seniors as they move on, so they maintain their own self-sufficiency. In the patio of Endeavour Hall, there were at least a half a dozen various service providers, such as the local dentist office and other things like that, so that they, so that the citizens that are, uh, aging and looking for specific services, and that's one thing that the village group helps, getting them there, matching up the individual with the need and the service that they need. And it was absolutely amazing. I know we're all going to be there one day, and we're going to need to have a group like that that will help facilitate making sure we can get our teeth cleaned, those that have teeth left and so forth. But it's, it's very important that, uh, an organization like that, and as Vice Mayor mentioned, not only was La Mirinda there representative, but also Walnut Creek, there are 45-plus groups like this throughout California doing tremendous work. That concludes my report.
Jim?
Any questions?
Yes. I do want to add something about the Art and Wine Festival. You mentioned that it is actually put on by the Clayton Business and Community Association. A lot of people came up when I was working the information booth
Yeah.
and wanted to comment and thank the City of Clayton for such a nice festival. And so, there was a little opportunity for education there, pointing out that this is actually put on by a group of volunteers here in Clayton. This is our largest fundraiser in the spring, and then we have another large one in the fall, the Oktoberfest. And with these two fundraisers, we raise a considerable amount of money that is all put back into the community of Clayton. Both the high school, sports teams, the middle school, elementary school, the, there's clubs here in the, in the Clayton area that receive donations, charities. We do some projects around town. We helped build the Bachi Court, Daffodil Hill.